Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, November 18th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. And we are in regular session this evening. I'd like to start by acknowledging that here in Athens County, we live and work on land initially settled and developed by earlier people, particularly the Shawnee and the Osage and those identified through cultures, commonly known as the Adina, Hopewell, and Fort Ancient. This acknowledgement reminds us of the importance of honoring history, people, and the planet as we work to continue improving our city's legacy. Our first order of business this evening is to establish quorum. All council members are present and we have quorum. The next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session of City Council held November 4th, 2024. May I have a motion for the approval of these minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The minutes have been approved. We also have disposition of the minutes for the special session of council held November 12th, 2024. May I have a motion for the approval of these minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The minutes have been approved. We now have communications. Do any council members have communications they'd like to share? Members, Pius.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a few minutes to say that I gave a presentation to the Board of, Evans Board of Realtors on Friday at their request, talking about the Affordable Housing Commission. And just real quick, they were very supportive of affordable housing, not surprisingly, I suppose, had several ideas and things that they were positive about. They have some resources and ideas they'd like to share with us. They'd really like to see building inspection added to our services in Athens for some obvious reasons, I think. They're in favor of owner-occupied Airbnbs, more senior housing, assisted living, and there's a concern about not having enough contractors in the area. They're in favor of ADUs and tiny houses and some of the things that are already being looked at, some issues about creative financing, and more communication about new programs, which I had informed them about some of the things that we're doing, and they were very excited about it. So also, I heard that the Ridges Project is looking very positive to be approved for the land, the OU's land to be transferred to the new community authority likely next month. So it's looking very positive. So those are, and that could be 700 housing units. That's a lot. And the Board of Realtors was pretty excited about that, as you can imagine. So I just wanted to share that with you real quickly.
Excellent, thank you. Other council members, any communications? Okay, moving on to reports and communications from other elected officials, Law Director Eliason. Auditor Heck, Treasurer Thomas, Mayor Patterson.
I have a few items to share with council tonight. First and foremost, Deputy Service Safety Director Andrew Chicky accompanied me down at the National League of Cities Conference, to which he presented on a panel, speaking on the CFI grant that we received for charging and fueling infrastructure, which was very well-received. And I was elected to be the second, or the first Vice President now of the National League of Cities. So I slowly move up the executive chain at NLC. We also came back with a number of things that we'll share as we begin to unpack them. Most importantly, speaking of housing, we were, we had several sessions on NLC's new Housing Accelerator Program. And so we'll certainly share that with different ways in which we can explore in increasing our housing stock here in the city of Athens. Councilmember McCary and Council President, President of Council, Sam Crowell, I know that you had both sent me emails in regards to information regarding our, what we've put into ADA accessibility here in the city of Athens. We still have more things to include to this list, we really do. I'm looking over it really quickly, and I know that one of the things that's not on here is the Highland Park Project, to which was a Snapple Kaboom Grant, and a lot of sweat equity from neighbors in the area. Requirement was to have 100 people help install ADA-accessible playground equipment. It was probably to the tune of about $100,000, all told, for that project. That would include the Kaboom-Snapple Grant that we received. But minus that and several other things that aren't on here, I'm looking at our list. Let me start with various projects, which really don't have what the projects were, but various projects that occurred between 2003 and 2015. And it was about 4 million in projects that had ADA elements within them. From 2015 up through 2024, we have a large number of projects that all have ADA elements in them, which would include building new sidewalks, as I had mentioned to council a couple of weeks ago, and things of that nature, but also the improvements to the house that the city owns at 458 Richland Avenue, to where we did a thorough ADA makeover of that house that we own, that the Metropolitan Housing Authority finds occupants for, to where it became ADA accessible in the bathrooms, the kitchen, as well as entrance and exit from that facility. We used to have two homes on North Blackburn. We made some pretty significant ADA improvements, most notably the driveway was such that individuals with vans, they would scrape bottom on that driveway because it was a steep drive. We paid to have that driveway completely rebuilt, so that didn't happen anymore. And then we subsequently sold slash donated those two homes to the Metropolitan Housing Authority, so that we were no longer responsible for those facilities. But before doing so, we put money into that. That was CDBG monies that paid for that. But to my point, from 2016 up to 2024, over $15 million in ADA improvements for the city of Athens and projected projects. President Crowell, you're asking, and Councilmember McCary were asking, well, what's up, what's in store for us in the future? So out to 2027, we have over $6,650,000 in projects that have ADA elements or are ADA improvement projects that we're going to be undertaking in the, over the course of the next three years. Next year, as you're well aware, we've got the sidewalk citywide curb ramps with the grant that we received, and we will likely be putting money from the city budget into that as well, to enhance as much as we possibly can. But also the Columbus Road multi-use path, where a sidewalk does not exist down on Columbus Road, that that will be part of the 2025 plan, the Stimson Avenue Bridge Project, which will have a sidewalk for the first time ever with a crash guardrail associated with it, or crash barrier, I should say, with that, to protect those that are in the shared use path area. West Side sidewalks are going to be coming at us this coming year. West Side, or West State Park bathrooms improvements are going to be going on. And then the Uptown Improvements Project, as long as we can finally get good bids on the Uptown Improvement Project, that that will be coming at us as well. But I wanted to make sure that council was aware, that we're not sitting on our hands when it comes to ADA improvements in the city. That's not even including, I call it the gerbil too, the skywalk that goes between here and the law building, to where, as the law director knows, we put in ADA hydraulic door openers for that. We've made a number of improvements, you know, and I've mentioned to council before as well, when I took office in 2016, one of the very first things was a $50,000 lift to not have to meet with individuals with mobility needs elsewhere, that they can now come up and have been able to come up to my office since 2016. I will make this available to council, but there's, this is a document that is fairly dynamic. It's constantly being updated and renewed. But again, you know, five, $15 million from the time I took office till the present is no small amount of money, nor is the $6 million that we're looking at with improvements looking out over the next three years, from 2025 to 2027. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We now will move on to ordinances for third reading. We'll read the titles and introduce the introductory council member. Ordinance 101-24 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established, Section 5.04.08, Sewer Rates, introduced by Councilmember McCary on behalf of all council members.
Thank you, President Crowell. This ordinance increases sewer rates by 3% effective January 1st, 2025, with the residential cost at $6.18 per 1,000 gallons. Commercial rate is $6.99 per 1,000 gallons, and industrial at $7.71 per 1,000 gallons. The, section one of this ordinance reads that effective January 1st, 2025, Athens City Code Title I, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established, Section 5.04.08, Sewer Rates are hereby omitted to those rates. And section two indicates that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law upon its passage and approval by the mayor. So I would like to move that council adopt ordinance 101-24.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Are there any comments or questions? The administration, elected officials, audience members? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 103-24 is an ordinance amending the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a slight change to the appropriation ordinance 130-23. Just to summarize, section one, there'll be $25,000 to the Cable Access Fund, there'll be $1,500 to the CDBG Formula Grant Fund 248, and $45,000 to Sewer Fund 750.37, cover electrical costs for AEP. And then section two, the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23 is amended by decreasing the transportation funds by $45,460, $44,465, and increasing the transportation system fund by the same amount. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Are there any comments or questions? Members, Pius.
Yeah, just perhaps you've told us this, and I don't recall, but I'd like to have a little bit more understanding of what you're going to do with the CDBG funds. It can be used for a variety of different things. So being on the Affordable Housing Commission, this has kind of come up.
Sidewalk improvements, ADA improvements.
Okay, that's where that's coming, okay. Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it.
Any other comments from council members? Elected officials? Audience members? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 104-24 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into contracts for the next phase of construction and construction engineering of the city sewer system improvements, project number 330, amending ordinance 10-24 and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt, 104-24.
Second.
Your introduction pretty much covers everything the ordinance is supposed to cover. The actual amendment, I can read that, that's done in section two. Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expand up to, and here's the amended part, $3,894,565, zero cents from Sewer Fund Plant 750.
Thank you, Member Reisner. Are there any comments or questions on this ordinance? Elected officials? Audience members? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 105-24 is an ordinance authorizing participation in Federal General Services Administration, GSA, a cooperative purchasing program, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt, 105-24.
Second.
Again, the title pretty much covers everything that the ordinance is for. I can read a little bit of section one. Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to register with the Federal General Service Administration, the GSA, a cooperative purchasing program for the purpose of participating in a joint purchasing program in which the city of Athens is eligible for membership for the acquisition of equipment, materials, supplies, and services.
Thank you, Member Reisner. Are there any comments or questions from council members? Other elected officials? Audience? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 108-24 is an ordinance authorizing design and construction of a public safety training facility, project number 373, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. This has been reviewed in committee and is now being read for the third time, whereas there will be future water and street appropriations requested for this project in order to connect the water line and road from the end of Kenny Drive to Elliottsville Road in order to increase access and redundancy in the water system. And whereas the city has received 2024 state capital bill funding in the amount of 2.5 million, and whereas the city will be utilizing the Federal General Services Administration, GSA, Cooperative Purchasing Program, and competitive bidding is not required, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, section one, the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $2,500,000 to Safety Services Fund 206, $200,000 to Street Fund 220, and $200,000 to Water Fund 740 for said public safety training facility and increasing the total appropriations by set amounts. Section two reads that the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $2,900,000 as follows: $2,500,000 from Safety Services Fund 206, $200,000 from Street Fund 220, and $200,000 from Water Fund 740. This ordinance shall be in effect and full force upon its passage and approval by the mayor. And I would like to move that council adopt ordinance 108-24.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor McCary. We have a motion and a second for approval. Are there any comments or questions on this ordinance? Elected officials? Audience? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for second reading. I will read the title and then check to see if there are any comments or questions. Ordinance 112-24 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement to provide financial support from the city's transient guest tax for the operation of the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, ORCA, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Member Thomas.
Yeah, we talked about the sum in the committee, and then it didn't come up, excuse me, on first reading. When I was looking over it again, realized that we had not really addressed the percent balance in the general fund in this that would allow us to pay this this year and next. So I spoke to the auditor to make sure that she didn't have any disagreements or issues with it, and she asked that we move that to where it says the city's general fund reserve balance is 9% higher to 8%, and felt that would be very doable for this year and next. So I would move that we amend ordinance 011224 to change to 8%.
Thank you for that recommendation. Is there?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? Yes, Members Mike.
I'd like to know the auditor's reasoning for that, because that's a little contrary to my correspondence with her.
Mostly because we've committed to paying it, and if we're not going to be at 9% right now, and we're not going to be at 9% come March of next year, we've committed to paying it. It's a reasonable amount in her opinion, and she said she was fine with moving that to 8%.
That's not what I got.
I don't know what to tell you about that.
I guess my question is 9%. We've held steadfast to, and then all of a sudden, we don't need 9% anymore. And we're about to, next week, talk about an income tax. This will go back to first reading, correct?
Correct.
So we'll have an opportunity to have the auditor present to explain this in a future meeting.
I believe so.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions on the amendment on the table? Hey, all those, any additional questions?
I was just wondering if it would be appropriate to ask the Treasurer if he could tell us what the current level of cushion is in the general fund.
I know we're at 8% right now, and the auditor sent me with a message to say that she fully supports this amendment, and I'd like to see you go for it.
Thank you, Treasurer Thomas. City administration, any elected officials? Mayor?
My only comment is going to be is that if the city auditor is comfortable with this and with this amendment, the city auditor is the one who monitors the budget and helping to manage the auditing process.
Thank you, Mayor. Any comments from the audience? Okay, we have a motion on the table to amend ordinance 112-24. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
The motion carries and the amendment is approved. Ordinance 112-24 has been read for the first time. Ordinance 113-24 is an ordinance amending the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Member Reisner, are you ready?
For what?
113-24? Oh, I'm just reading the title.
It's the second reading.
My fault, I got thrown off by our amendment. Are there any comments or questions on that? Thank you. Ordinance 114-24 is an ordinance amending ordinance 131-23, the 2024 staffing levels and pay grades in the mayor's office, and declaring an emergency, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 114-24.
So moved.
Reason for the suspension of the rules is for the purpose of training the mayor's new executive assistant for year and retirement.
Thank you, Member Reisner. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for ordinance 114-24. Any comments or questions from City Council? Yes, Member Claude Field.
I just think it's really nice to see the city doing this, to invest some money in getting somebody really, really well-trained, because Patty Whitmer has been an absolutely incredible executive assistant to the mayor, and she has big shoes to fill. So helping somebody else get off to a good start in the position is a really, really smart decision.
Thank you, Mayor Claude Field. I'll just add that I learned recently that Patty has been an awesome employee all across the city of Athens, and they've been stealing her from one department to another for a long time because of her excellence. So thank you for that comment, Member Claude Field. Okay, any other comments or questions? Yes, I'm sorry, Mayor, please.
And so, point of clarification, or at least a little expansion on President Crowell's remarks, yes, I did steal Patty from Engineering and Public Works, and largely because of her dedication to customer service and the way that she was a true professional down there. And, you know, it's, without putting on the ugly face, I'm going to miss her. She's been outstanding.
Clerk Walker, are we voting on the suspension or?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so we are now, we have a, are you making, the, we are suspended, Member Reisner.
Okay. In that case, I would like to make a motion that we adopt 114-24.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for adoption of 114-24. Are there any comments or questions? City administration, elected officials, or audience members? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 115-24 is an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Ordinance 116-24 is an ordinance authorizing 2025 non-union compensation, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith, and declaring an emergency, introduced by the Finance and Ordinance 117-24 is an ordinance adopting a fringe benefits package for non-union personnel within the city of Athens, and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith, and declaring an emergency, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Ordinance 118-24 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into or to extend the agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office through December 31st, 2025, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 119-24 is- Ordinance 119-24 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 1, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code B's established, to include sections 23.03.11D, accessory structures and accessory energy systems, and 23.03.12B, principal renewable energy systems, introduced by Councilmember Swank. Okay, and that completes our ordinances for second reading. We will now move on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 120-24 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract extension to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Economic Development Council, and declaring an emergency, introduced by the Finance and Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me read Section 1. The mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a contract extension through December 31st, 2027, to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Economic Development Council, ACED, or ACEDC, sorry, in the amount of $60,000 annually from the general fund. A copy of said agreement and ACEDC deliverables is attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference.
Thank you, Member Reisner. Are there any comments or questions on this ordinance? Elected official? Ordinance 113-24 is an ordinance amending the 2024 Appropriation Ordinance 130-23, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Oh, I'm sorry.
121?
I was in second, yeah. Ordinance 121-24 is an ordinance authorizing 2025 staffing levels, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith, and declaring an emergency, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Allow me to read the pertinent section of the ordinance. Effective the first pay period of 2024, authorizing staffing levels attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference shall be in effect and all ordinances inconsistent therewith shall be repealed. Section 2, upon receiving written notification from an employee of a pending departure, City Council does hereby authorize the President of Council, Mayor, Law Director and Auditor to hire replacements for currently staffed positions so long as adequate funds are available within the elected official's budget. There will be a temporary increase in the staffing numbers during the overlap of employees within these positions that will subsequently be sunset to the official staffing levels. Thank you.
Clerk Walker?
Is there a...
2024. Okay, there's a clerical error in Section 1.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from committee, from council members on this ordinance? Elected officials? Audience members? Thank you. Ordinance 122-24 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract with the Employee Benefit Service Center to serve as the city's third-party health insurance administrator, TPA, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Section 1 of the ordinance, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to enter into contract with the Employee Benefit Center to serve as a third-party administrator, TPA, of the city's health insurance program for the period from January 1, 2025, to December 31st, 2025, to include Exhibit A, planned listing administered services fee schedule, and amendment to the planned document hereetofore attached and incorporated herein by reference. Said contract shall contain a minimum of the following controls. There's a list of the various controls which are available on our drive, as well as the addendums and attachments that go with the ordinance.
Thank you, Member Reisner. Any comments or questions from council members? Elected official? Audience? Thank you. Ordinance 123-24 is an ordinance authorizing a group excess loss medical insurance contract and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. The title of the ordinance that you just read pretty much sums up the entire ordinance. I don't think there's probably any point in reading the rest of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council members on 123-24? Other elected official? Audience members? Thank you. Ordinance 124-24 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a one-year agreement with Sunday Creek Horizons, a consulting firm, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
Sunday Creek Horizons is a consulting firm, and they will undertake the services set forth in Exhibit 1. In other words, what's the $120,000 going to go for? The scope of services will include management and administration of city grant-funded projects, completion of the Americans with Disabilities Act transition plan, which the mayor alluded to earlier, and work in collaboration with the city and identify, with the city on identified projects, including but not limited to the redevelopment of the Columbus Road Fire Station, utilization of the city's fiber assets, construction of the ALCO boat ramp, ALCO being the red house out on Union Street, sometimes referred to as the Habitat House, and establishment of a physical hub for the farmer's market. Thank you, President Crowell.
Thank you, Members Swank. Any comments or questions on this ordinance from council members? Elected officials? Audience members? Thank you. Ordinance 125-24 is an ordinance authorizing disposal of vehicles no longer needed for a municipal purpose, introduced by Councilmember Spionas.
Thank you, President Crowell. So this is pretty easy compared to all these other ones we've been reading, but basically we have two old vehicles that were used for transit. One has 313,491 miles, and the other one has 218,326. We want, well, the city wants to get rid of those. The transportation coordinator, Rudy Bootner, I think I'm pronouncing that correctly, explained that to us. They anticipate that the scrap value will be under $5,000. So anyway, need to get rid of them. That's it.
Thank you, Members Spionas. Any comments or questions from council on this ordinance? Other elected official? Audience? Thank you. Ordinance 126-24 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 5, Public Utilities, Chapter 5.03, Water Regulations. Section 5.03.03, Wasted Water Charged For, and Title 1, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. As we've discussed in committee, this is an optional program that folks can opt into at an affordable rate to be reimbursed for water cost in the event of a water line break. Section 1 reads that unless registered in the Residential Water Loss Protection Program, all water that passes through a meter shall be charged for, charged for when used, wasted, or lost, and the mayor or service safety director may grant relief to the requirement when a water line breaks between the meter and the serviced building. With a variable break, the water and sewer charges shall be assessed for that month based upon the average monthly usage of the previous six months. We then have some specifications about the size of the water lines, and we indicate that a maximum credit of $750 may be applied to registered accounts for one verified break or leak once per calendar year. Additional terms and conditions for the program shall be set by the Service Safety Director and administered through the Utilities Building Office. Section 2 indicates that Athens City Code Title 1, General Provisions, Chapter 103, Code Fees Established, is hereby amended to read as follows. Section 5.03.03, Residential Water Loss Protection Program, $36 annual opt-in fee added to water customer's account renewable annually. Finally, Section 3, the ordinance shall be in effect in full force upon its passage and approval by the mayor. I have now read for the first time ordinance 126-24.
Thank you, Mayor McCary. Any comments or questions from City Council?
I did think of just one for administration, and this can be something we come back to, but it occurred to me that I don't really have a sense of how often water lines break in this sort of situation that would impact households in Athens, and I thought perhaps just based on emergency calls, you might have a general sense of that.
I do. They don't occur often, but when they do occur, a lot of times it can be significant to the homeowner. If I were to give you a number, I would say, you know, somewhere between, you know, two to four a year.
Wow, okay.
And I'm being liberal with that, by the way. You know, but it happens, but it just doesn't happen, like, it's not something that we see once a week or once, certainly not once a day.
Thanks very much.
Go ahead.
Please.
I would like to add, because you, and to the viewing audience, that they're likely to see a, either a letter or something attached to their utility bill that will be coming from me. The city of Athens since 2017 has been a part of the National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program. Now, that particular warranty program protects damages inside a home, up to $2,000 of coverage. I can't remember exactly, President Crowell, what the amount per month is extra on someone's utility bill to be a part of that program. It's an opt-in program, but I will be sending out a refresh. I was just talking to the Service Line Warranty Program in Tampa at the National League of Cities City Summit Conference last week, and so they're going to be sending me information. So anyone who's watching, you will be getting something from me. It is from me. It is legit. I hear that a lot. Is this real? And it gets round filed. This is real. We currently have 47 customers. In 2018 and 19, we had many, many more, but I think it's just a matter of the refresh getting out there, which we have not done in quite some time. But it is certainly a beneficial program if someone were to have a major service line rupture where it is the property owner's responsibility, which is three foot from the foundation of the home, and then from there up to the home and through the home. So the service line warranty, it's not only for your water, the water delivery system, it's also can be applied to your sewer system as well. If there's a sewer system that is the responsibility of the homeowner, it can apply, landlords can apply for it if they choose to. But it's a great program, so you're likely to see more. And so with this, as you're looking at it and the amount, the maximum credit that someone may be able to apply, and then if you were to go through this program, an additional $2,000 coverage for someone as long as they're in good standing with the Service Line Warranty Program is a pretty decent protection for you in your home.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just answer your question, Member McCary. Anecdotally, I've lived in my house for 28 years, and this has happened to me, and it was a few hundred dollars in water bills until the problem got solved. So this, I'll remind the public, is an opt-in fee, so you can choose to add this to your water bill at, I believe, $36.
Annually.
Annual. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this ordinance? Members of the public? Okay, thank you. Ordinance 127-24 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract to lease or otherwise monetize the city's solar renewable energy credits, SRECs, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me read the pertinent sections. Whereas the city of Athens maintains several behind-the-meter solar arrays, both city-owned and through power purchase agreements through third parties, and whereas solar renewable energy credits, SRECs, can be allocated to the energy produced by these arrays and monetized on energy markets, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, Section 1. The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to enter into a contract to lease or otherwise monetize the city's solar renewable energy credits, SRECs. Section 2, the auditor is hereby requested to receive proceeds from the sale of SRECs into Capital Improvement Fund 580. Section 3, the administration shall report the status and performance of said leases to the City Council at least once for two-year council terms. Section 4, the ordinance shall be in effect in full force upon its passage and approval by the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Reisner. Any comments or questions from City Council members on this ordinance? Elected official? Mayor?
Just to say, any revenue generated by the SRECs, I would like to see through 580 go to further enhancing our carbon footprint reduction by having it on other solar projects, both large and small. When I say small, I think what would be wonderful is to have smaller solar arrays associated with some of our lift stations and pumps throughout the city as well. So we're constantly exploring those on our mission to reduce our carbon footprint, which we've been doing very well at reducing our carbon footprint, but having these SREC leases or sale thereof will certainly help in that effort.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from audience members? Seeing none, we are now moved on to announcements and other business.
Mr. President, I would move that we remove 05524 from the table.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, are there any comments or questions on this motion removed from the table? Yes, Member Claude.
May we ask why?
Yeah. I was going to do that. You beat me to the punch. This was originally tabled because the lots, the five lots in question on Grand Park and Eden Place were going to be rezoned from R2 to R3 so that the proprietor could expand the business parking lot to increase their inventory, hopefully sell more cars, increase sales tax revenue, and maybe employ some more people if they sell enough cars. The problem was, we had a light trespass issue. The lights were measured twice, were out of compliance with the city's code in terms of light. Sometime within the last few weeks, the two lights that were affecting the light trespass have been disconnected or turned off. A new reading was taken, and that area is now in compliance with city code, therefore felt inappropriate to remove from the table. And if council so chooses tonight to pass this so this can be rezoned and the parking lot can be completed and the cars can be parked there.
Any other comments or questions on the motion to remove this ordinance from the table? Elected officials, audience members? All those in favor of removing this item from the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The item has been removed from the table, Members Swank.
Mr. President, I would move that the council approve 05524.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 55-24. I apologize for my ignorance. Member Clerk Walker had 55-24 been read for the second time.
It came up.
It came up, it was a third reading. Thank you very much. Okay, any comments or questions on the motion in front of us to approve 55-24? Elected official? Audience? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ordinance has been approved. Are there any other announcements and other business? Members Swank, would you like to make a motion on amending the rules of council?
Yes, President Crowell, I would move the council amend the rules of council as discussed in committee last week.
Would you like to provide a description or some introduction to those changes?
Yes, there were three areas. First, oops, excuse me, 90 pages here today. The first was in Rule Number 1, simply changing the word legal to federal holiday. The second was in Rule Number, what is it, 17? 14. Getting close. This dealt with the public speaking. Each speaker will be limited to a maximum of three minutes with a limitation of 15 minutes for public...
for public participation per topic. That's the simple change there, 15 minutes for public participation per topic unless permission to extend time has been granted by the president of council, retains the right of the president of council when he or she feels that additional community input is appropriate for a topic. And then finally, Rule Number 29 brings the committee meetings into a situation where they're consistent with the regular meetings, and essentially that any subject matter brought before city council shall first be referred to the proper committee chair or official, and that committee chair or official shall forward copies of all materials to be considered at the next committee meeting to each member of committee by 4:00 p.m. on Friday before the committee meeting. This allows us to get the materials into the hands of committee members to review over the weekend in case they need to do any research or homework prior to Monday night's meeting. In Section B, when any person is about to address a committee, they shall request permission from the committee chair, just like we do in a regular meeting. No debate, disrespect, or obscenity shall be tolerated. The committee chair shall rule any such individual out of order. Individual members of the public shall be permitted to speak only one time per committee topic. Each speaker will be limited to a maximum of three minutes with a limitation of 15. No, there's a typo in there. Is it 5? 15?
No.
Yeah, no big deal. Minutes for public participation per topic unless permission to extend the time has been granted by the committee chair. That verbiage is very, very, very similar to a regular business meeting. Mr. President, those are the three changes that we discussed at length at last week's committee meeting.
Thank you, Members Swank. Is there a second for this motion to approve the council rules?
Seconded.
Thank you. Point of order for the law director. Can we do all of these at once, or should we do them individually?
Yes, you can do them all.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the council rules. Are there any additional comments or questions? Members Spionas.
Well, we did talk about, and this doesn't necessarily change this, but I still like the idea of having, and Clerk Walker said this wouldn't be a big deal, but if we make sure that we put it into our civic clerk on that Friday at the same time so we can all see them, that's where I look at them. I think some other people do too. So, it would be extremely convenient to have them there as well. I don't know that that needs to be changed here. I don't know, but that would make it really easy.
A slightly different administrative function to have these in the hands at 4 and then be asking Clerk Walker to have these in the Civic Plus 5. So, I don't hear that you're asking for an amendment to the proposed rules changes.
I don't think we need an amendment to say that. I just want to bring it up.
Put it out there, right.
I think it would really be helpful for those of us who look at this.
Member Reisner?
I just want to say that I think that would be a mistake to include it in Civic Clerk because we could change the system in a couple of years, but we've codified it in our rules that it has to be in this system when we get a new system. So, then we have to go back and change the rules again and make it fit the new system. And, you know, with computers, you get a new system almost every other day. So, I'd say it's a nice thing to do procedurally, but it shouldn't be in the rules.
I didn't say I thought it should be, but I thought it was worth bringing up while we're talking about it. So, thank you.
Thank you both. Member Wood?
I'll just add on that I also think it'd be good to have, and it is very helpful. It's just instead of trying to sort through emails during conversation as well, back and forth of like finding the right file, it's just always here, easier to find. I check it, I check the civic clerk at home all the time. So, yeah, strongly agree.
Member Thomas?
Just for a point of clarity for myself and I assume everyone else, this is for chairs to send the emails out to other members of the committee who do not, chairs do not have access to Civic Plus. That is within the clerk's office, which means you're adding work to their day that may or may not work in this timeframe. And this is just, as you would in any board, the chair sends emails out to people on the board. I think that seems the simplest and least asking of other people's time to do this.
Thank you, Member Thomas, and that is what we're looking at right now.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions on the changes to council rules in front of us in this document? Three main changes as outlined by Member Swank. Any, yes, mayor?
I have a question about something that isn't amended in here, nor was it really brought up, although I've been pondering over this since probably January 1 of 2012. And that being, why is it that city council starts the new year in a regular session and then goes into committee the following week and so on and so forth, as well as coming off the July recess and going right into a regular session? Now, there's, there's ordinances that carry over your recess and so on and so forth, but I know that Clerk Walker and I have had this conversation in the past, and I've just always viewed it as odd, council. I feel like before you go into council recess over the month of July, you know, technically it would be the fourth Monday in June, and therefore it would be committees' night that night and setting up all committees, and then we're going to go into recess, and then we're going to come back out and come into a regular session. But I think most importantly, you know, as you're well aware, the city administration, other than the designated federal holidays or that period of time, we don't go on vacation and we, the city still runs, and there are still bills to pay, and we roll right into, like I said, a first reading on the first Monday of the new year, which, again, it's not now as, you know, the chief executive for the city. I thought about it when I was in council too. Just a friendly, I'd like to have, open that up for any level of discussion for council to ponder over. And I don't know, Clerk Walker, if there's anything under ORC that prescribes a statutory city must start its new year on, I don't know, I've never dug that deep into it as to whether that's the case. I know that we've been doing this for probably millennia.
Changing it does cause a problem in December because we do regular sessions in December, but we hold a special session the second Monday of the month. So, if we switched this around, then we'll have to have two special sessions in December. I mean, in six of one.
I'll just share, mayor, that this has been a suggestion that has been brought forward from Members Spionas, and we decided for these council rule amendments that we would kind of handle them by council members. So, tonight we're looking at Members Swank's suggestions, and we will be also reviewing that question, and we've been talking about it, thanks to the suggestion of Members Spionas. So, and she has some other ideas, and so we will be revisiting the council rules. This is just what we have in front of us tonight.
Thank you. Again, I have, I don't care one way or the other, I just always have found it to be rather unusual to me.
So, also, the revised code states that the law director is supposed to present their report to council the first regular session of the year. And that's what I always do.
Yeah.
And usually, that's all that goes on, is I present my.
And then we go on.
I kind of like your special night. But that's okay. I'm not a voting member anymore. Okay, any other comments or questions on these rule changes? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of these three rules changes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The rules have been amended. Thank you, Members Swank. We now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. Would anyone like to come forward? You may give us your name and your address, and you may have three minutes to speak. Seeing none, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Eyes have it, and we are adjourned at 7:57 p.m. Thank you.